Good morning. To call to order the August 17th Planning Commission meeting, would you please join me in the pleasure of leaving?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which has stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call?
Just say here, Phil.
Commissioner Dukas, Commissioner Onst- Chair Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Kessley?
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you.
I'm assuming or presuming Nora's not coming today? Is that true? Okay. Now is a time set aside for public comments for matters not appearing on the agenda. I have no speaker cards. Does anybody wish to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing no one, then we'll move on. I don't suppose I need to remind anybody about cell phones and parking since you all are pretty well acquainted. Okay, the first and major item of business is PL 17-0011. Dunman Group NA is the applicant. The applicant requests a CUP authorizing the continued operation and maintenance of wholesale nursery and agricultural plant propagation greenhouse facility for 20 years. The application also is seeking a CUP for agricultural promotion. Could I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Onstott. Christina Buehler with planning staff. So before you today is the CUP which Chair Onstott had briefly described. So before I get into the specifics of what the applicant is requesting, I'm just going to give you, orientate yourselves with the project site, if I can figure out how to use this. Okay. So the project site is located in the unincorporated area of Santa Paula. It's adjacent to the city of Santa Paula, city limits on the eastern side of the parcel. And the project site is adjacent to also to Telegraph Road, and the nearest major cross street is Briggs Road, which is west of the project site. The CUP boundary proposed by the applicant is here highlighted in yellow dots, and it's about eight acres in size, and the remaining portion of the site is currently in agricultural production, in row crops, and that is about nine acres in site, in area. So again, the project site is zoned agricultural exclusive, 40 acres minimum lot size, and the general plan designation is agriculture. There's no area plant designation for this project site. So surrounding areas are residential and agricultural, and as I said before, there's that residential development. It's the Santa Paula West Mobile Home Park. It's adjacent to the project site on the eastern side, and Highway 126 is about .38 miles south of the project site. So to see what's physically on the ground right now, here are some pictures. So the existing setting is, this is, the photo to my left is a picture looking from, looking towards Highway 126. We have the greenhouses A and B on the right, and a metal shed to the left, and I want to point out that this shed is now demolished. The planning division gave the applicant a zoning clearance to demolish that because it was an unpermitted structure, and you're not going to be using it. And also, a picture on my right is of the two smaller greenhouses that are also proposed to be legalized with this discretionary permit. There is an 11, a 12,000, excuse me, 1,202 square foot and 1196 square foot greenhouse structures, and a little display area. The picture to my left is a portion of the ag promotional parking area, and in the background, you can't really see it, but this is where the Santa Paula Mobile Home Park is located. And this is just a view from Telegraph Road of the existing warehouse building, and also the two smaller greenhouse structures in the background, and the entrance to the project So to better get a whole bird's eye view of the site, here's an aerial of the project site in relation to the residential development. So this area that is lined with trees, densely populated with trees, is the Adams Baranca. It's a public works agency drainage course, and this is the development for the existing agricultural warehouse and wholesale nursery, and then the existing portion of where the row crops are located. So as Chair Onstott had said, this is a request by the applicant, Dunman Group, to continue the operation and maintenance of a wholesale nursery and agricultural plant propagation greenhouse facility for an additional 20-year period, and should your commission grant the CUP, it would expire on today's date in 2037. They're also requesting to legalize the two greenhouse structures that I mentioned previously, and also to establish an annual ag promotional use on the site. So the specifics of the ag promotional use, it is proposed to occur over a six-day period, consecutive six days, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and it's going to be largely in the greenhouse A. 300 guests over the six days, and that's about, about an average of 50 guests per day, and also onsite parking. There's about 52 parking spaces onsite, but if additional parking is needed, and the majority of the people that are coming to, as guests to the ag promotional use, would be coming through with vans and carpool from all over the state of California. And there will be no amplified sound, and no food and beverage, and there will also be a security guard onsite during the event. So the site plan, overall site plan for the site is here, and it's color-coded for you. It's for these. So the existing greenhouses are in blue. There's greenhouse A to the right, and greenhouse B. There's two Ls currently in these greenhouses, tissue grown and green fuse. The purple down here is the smaller greenhouses that are proposed to be legalized. The yellow is the existing warehouse, and the brown is Telegraph Road. And although not identified by any colors on this site plan, this line up here above the parking area is the CUP boundary line. And so this is the site plan for the proposed agricultural promotional uses on the site. Existing greenhouse A would be where the existing, or the proposed ag promotional events would occur, and they're known as the CAST trials, and that's, stands for the Council for Agricultural Science and Technology. And here are the two greenhouses and the parking area adjacent to the existing warehouse, and up here on the other side of the existing warehouse building. So the non-custodial zoning ordinance, which is the overlying ordinance for this project site, requires that the ag promotional use be consistent with certain requirements of the ordinance. So these requirements are spelled out specifically in Section D of your staff report, but I just want to briefly go over what the general terms of consistency are for the proposed agricultural use. So the use is in compliance with the ordinance because it is a use that is accessory to the existing principal use, which is the greenhouse facility. It is also temporary in nature. As I mentioned, it will occur over a six-day period, consecutive days, and it is, a portion of the site will only be used for the ag promotional uses, as opposed to the whole site. And the agricultural uses, the intent of the use is to promote the agricultural industry, and that will be done with discussions and walkthroughs of the site by the guests to talk and discuss and learn about, and educate the public on things like soil science and water conservation, and anything to do with the agricultural industry. And also, it will be required to meet certain requirements of other agencies, such as the county fire department. So staff conducted an environmental review of the proposed project pursuant to CEQA, there's California Environmental Quality Act, and staff determined that an environment, that a negative declaration addendum would be the most appropriate document for this project. So the intent of a negative declaration addendum is to determine what the existing setting is, and the change that will occur as part of the proposed project. So when staff did that analysis, staff determined there would be no adverse impacts as a result to the proposed project, and no significant impacts as a result of the project. Staff also, for this hearing, sent out notices within 300 feet of the property, and also sent notices to the city of Santa Paula. 24 notices were sent, and staff received, did not receive any comments on the project from any jurisdictional agencies or from neighbors.
Excuse me. No comments whatsoever from the city of Santa Paula or neighboring properties?
Chair Onstott, that is correct.
Thank you.
So staff recommends that your commission review the recommended actions, and also listen to the testimony that's given today, and also the information provided by staff, and make your determination based on the recommended actions. I won't read them right now, but they're in Section G of your staff report. So we have the applicant's representative here. If you have any questions, and staff can also answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anybody have questions of staff at this point? Richard? Christina, briefly? Christina, please.
Yes.
There are no CUP violations or anything that we're dealing with? We're just dealing with correcting, getting permitted the structures that were, that are on this item now?
Chair Onstott, Commissioner Rodriguez, there are no, there are no specific violations on the property, although staff has required that the applicant obtain and sign a compliance agreement with the county. It's an agreement between the county and the applicant to do certain things to abate the violation. In this case, it would be to legalize the two smaller greenhouse structures, and also get the CUP authorized. And so they have a compliance agreement in effect, and they have to date met the terms of that agreement up to today's date.
Okay, and secondary question. The Mobile Home Park immediately adjacent, is that in the city or in the county adjacent to the city?
Chair Onstott, Commissioner Rodriguez, it is in the city of Santa Paula.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, anything at this point?
Yeah. Sorry. Christina.
Hello.
One question about notification. I know that there's the 300-foot rule. Did the 300 feet extend into the adjacent residential area or not?
Chair Onstott, Commissioner White, our ordinance requires us to have any public notification for an environmental document, except an addendum, and a public hearing to be within 300 feet of the property line. So yes, it did get.
And the property line being the Baranca, not the CUP boundary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Does, I have one question.
Yes.
Does this project involve fumigation onsite?
The applicant can better answer that question for you.
Okay, well, I'll be asking that question later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll move on. Okay, at this time, I'd, excuse me, I'd like to ask for disclosures from the commissioners. Anyway, I'll read the, to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written expedited communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us. Commissioner White?
Yeah, being the rookie commissioner here, I did have some questions about CUPs in general and this particular CUP, and I had some communications with planning staff, including Tricia, and Christina, and Brian Baca. And my, I can go into detail about that later, I suppose, or do you want me to do it now?
I'll look over to the county council.
If there were just general questions about the CUP process, and it doesn't require disclosure, the only thing that would require disclosure is if planning staff told you something that hasn't already been said in this hearing, regarding this specific project.
Okay, we did talk about some possible conditions that the planning commission might add to what's in the written record here.
And you don't need to go into detail there, because it's something the commission might do as opposed to something about this project.
Yeah, I will definitely speak about it later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No disclosures.
Maggie?
I have no disclosures.
I'm obviously a resident of the area. I know the property fairly well, but I have no disclosures. Okay, we'll move on. Can we have the presentation of the applicant, please?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Michelle Manigold, P.E. I work for Water Resource Engineering Associates, and we're the representatives for the applicant. And I really don't have anything to add to Christina's report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, ma'am, that deals, does the project include fumigation onsite?
Forgive me, Mr. Onstott.
Onstott.
I've got the wrong glasses with me today. No, sir, not on the CUP site. The site adjacent, the agricultural site, which is not part of the CUP site, may or may not use fumigation on the row crops. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the applicant, Phil? Richard?
No.
Maggie?
No.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody here in opposition? Seeing an empty room. I doubt if you'll need a rebuttal then. Staff closing arguments, discussion? Well, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll discuss the matter amongst ourselves and/or make a motion and vote. Does anyone want to discuss the matter further? Phil, go ahead.
As I mentioned, I did have some conversations with planning staff, and it's, can we put up the aerial picture of the property adjacent to the residential area? I'm a big supporter of agriculture in the county, and we want to make sure that where agriculture abuts residential areas or schools, that the project does not create any, thank you, environmental impacts into the, into, in this case, residential area. And I asked the question of Tricia primarily about, in the environmental report, did county staff look at chemicals and pesticides stored on the site? And to follow up with your question on fumigation, has the question of, is there possibly going to be any pesticide drift into the residential area from either the CUP or the row crops that occur there? And I also talked to Brian Bach about this, and we had a lively conversation yesterday, and I was assured that the environmental health department has done a survey of the chemicals and pesticides that are stored onsite, and they're within their limitations, and they apparently have no concerns. And I was also informed that the ag commissioner's office is the regulatory agency in charge of ensuring that there are not problems of pesticide drift offsite into residential areas in this case, or it could be a school in another case. We all think of the Rio Mesa High School story. And I think it's important for our commission, when we're looking at projects like this, to make it clear both to the applicant, and not their representatives, but to the owners of the project, the operators, and to the neighbors, that we're concerned about this issue, and that conditions can't be imposed to make sure that there are no impacts. And I had talked with Christina and Brian yesterday, can we, can we get a condition that acknowledges, it's not, not something that's not already there, because they are required to meet environmental health and ag commissioner regulations, but can we get a condition that acknowledges what's in place for these protections? And I would hope that we, as a commission, could append such a condition to this permit.
Okay. Phil, you'll find it depends on the project. If someone really wants this, ag gets overrun.
Yeah.
I said, you'll find that it depends on the project. I won't talk to you about it now, but I'll give you several examples before where ag was overrun, the right to farm ordinance didn't seem to matter, and that happened. But you're absolutely right, we need to protect the legitimate interests of both the applicant and the residents in the area, which is why I asked, or we asked about violations, complaints, et cetera. Having heard none over the, what, they've been in there since the late 80s, I guess, operating, having heard no complaints and had none registered, the fact that the CUP expired in '09 or so, unfortunately, that happens more than, more often than we'd like, but that in and of itself is not a reason really to hammer them. So I understand what you're saying, if, after we finish this discussion, you want to formulate something, I'll support it. But we have the right to farm ordinance in place. I don't know how much, well, I don't know how well it's received from time to time. And I believe, are there not setback requirements on spraying these days from residential?
Chair Onstott, yes, there is.
Did you discuss those, Phil, with anybody, the setback requirements in spraying now?
No. No, we didn't specifically talk about setbacks. I mean, it set back considerably, I think, from the greenhouse operation, the CUP boundary, but the row crop is right there.
Okay. Maggie Johnson?
This is a question for staff. Since there are already conditions for environmental review of the things that go on in this project, and they're in compliance, and those, I believe, will continue on, no matter whether we extend this CUP or not, would we be putting more restrictions on the applicant by adding something to what already exists?
I have a follow-up with that, too. I mean, assuming for the purpose of argument, we make no change, if a health and safety situation arises, do we not have the power to go back in the CUP? Anyway, so I'm sorry, I wanted to raise.
Chair Onstott, Commissioner Kessley, as far as the question on whether they would still be required to follow the ag commissioner's requirements on spraying and the environmental health regulations, absolutely. But this does not, by adding a condition that simply sort of reiterates the fact that they would need to do that, doesn't make it any more stringent than it would be otherwise, because the other agencies have their own regulatory standards, and apply those completely separate from our CUP process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we would be adding any new regulatory authority or conditions on this, but just recognizing what is there, so that people in the future can look and say, yeah, we did discuss this, we did emphasize this issue, because it has been a problem in other areas of the county, and we're just emphasizing what's there so that the applicant knows and the neighbors know.
Well, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah.
In black letter, it's probably wise to do something like that. I don't think it's necessarily cumulative, I think it'd be fine. Anyone else?
So we would be proposing some statement on the.
Incorporating those.
Incorporating.
Yeah.
Into the CUP.
Right.
And not an addition.
From whatever jurisdictions.
Not an additional condition.
No.
I don't have a problem incorporating some statement.
Ma'am, we've closed the public hearing. I can reopen the public hearing, if it's important.
I would just like to give you all.
Would you please step up, please? Would you please step up? I'm reopening the public hearing temporarily.
Thank you. Just for clarification, the applicant does not own the parcel. They are leasing only the CUP site. The agricultural portion of the site belongs to someone else, and I just wanted to make it clear that my applicant doesn't really have any control over that portion of the site.
Well, we would only be talking about the confines, within the confines of the CUP.
I'm sorry, sir.
We're only talking about the confines of the CUP. We're not going.
Okay, I misunderstood.
I understand the Santana Trust owns it.
I thought we were talking about the row crops to the east.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Do I have a motion or further discussion?
I would like to make a motion that we accept staff recommendation for PL 17-0011 with the added verbiage that we discussed, just making a statement of conditions that already exist.
So we're incorporating, you're saying we're incorporating by reference those other conditions that exist from, in the CUP and from other agencies with jurisdiction? Something, something generic, folks.
Yes.
Is that right?
Excuse me, Chair Onstott?
Beg your pardon?
Excuse me.
I'll second that. I think they may have some actual words, because we did discuss this yesterday, and maybe you want to read those?
We have some, we have some suggested language, if you'd like to hear it.
I'd love to hear it.
Chair Onstott.
By the way, we have a motion and a second. Now we're clarifying the language.
Here's the language. The operation shall be in compliance with all regulations regarding the storage, handling, and use of pesticides, fertilizers, other agricultural chemicals, and hazardous materials implemented or enforced by the environmental health division and the agricultural commissioner.
That satisfactory, Phil? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll. I guess we're voting, whatever. Unanimously approved. Congratulations, young lady.
Thank you.
Wow, I wish they were all like that. Does the planning director, or the acting planning director have anything further for us today? I'd like to discuss the scheduling coming up on the 7th, if I can get a chance.
Chair Onstott, I don't have any particular comments for you this morning, except to share that the planning director is on a lovely trip at the Grand Canyon and Zion this week.
Could you comment, could we comment for a moment on this September 7th? I understand we have four or five, which means we'll be here all day or maybe into the night, as far as I can tell. Can you give us an overview of what we're getting?
I believe that you have two appeals of oil and gas-related facilities and permits, and there's also an item on the agenda for what we call the inconsistent zoning project. It's a long-range planning project that's been in process for a while to try and bring the inconsistent zoning that exists, where there's a general plan land use designation that's not consistent with the zoning, basically back into compliance. And so there's a proposal to rezone certain areas of Oak Park. There's a few parcels outside of Camarillo. We also have Thomas Aquinas College, where there's a rezoning effort that results from the SOAR initiative that was passed in November. So their general plan land use designation was changed to existing community by a vote of the county electorate, and as a result, their, that existing community general plan land use designation is no longer consistent with the zoning on the site, and so that zoning will also be proposed for revision, as well as, that also then also stems into a revision of the Green Belt ordinance between. stems into a revision of the Green Belt ordinance between the county, Santa Paula, and Fillmore because the Green Belt ordinance only allows parcels to be zoned open space, rural or agricultural in order to be part of the Green Belt. But now, because of the initiative in November, the Thomas Aquinas College parcels are now have an existing community land use designation. So that's one of the items that's coming to your board that I'm very familiar with because my staff member is working on it. I believe there's one other item that's a potential item for the agenda, but it's not showing on your tentative hearing agenda, and that one can be moved to another time. It was just an informational report to be presented to you by Chris Stevens, I believe, on short-term rental regulations, so.
So we don't know if we're going to get that one or not?
Well, that one, if your agenda's too full, then that one's going to fall to another day.
I think you know it's too full. But I also have an awful lot of people who are interested in that, too. So I want to make sure it gets a good hearing, and I would suggest you kick that over because we're going to be here a long time. Okay. Any other questions, the staff? And may I ask when we'll get the materials?
I'll let our planning commission secretary answer that.
Well, Anna, you're on the spot now.
Chair Onstad, as soon as I can get the materials finalized for my staff members, they will be provided to you. But officially, they will be made available one week prior to the hearing. But as you know, I always try to get them to you before that posting date.
I understand. Thank you. Is anything further from anybody? And this meeting is adjourned. Whoops, excuse me, Phil, go ahead.
One point I want to make, global climate change is one of the most important issues that society and this commission will be addressing, and will be doing it as part of the general plan update. There's a whole chapter in there about it. And I'm suggesting that review of permits will be another area in which we need to address climate change. And the upcoming oil and gas permits that Tricia mentioned are an example of that. There are some events that have happened in the state, regulations adopted by the Air Resources Board that are coming to oil and gas facilities that I think we need to discuss when we discuss these oil, upcoming oil and gas permits.
Okay. Anything further? This meeting's adjourned.